The Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Vier is present. First item on the agenda, Special Education Expense Services. See attached memo. Assistant Superintendent Moynihan.
Thank you. As you can see enclosed, you will see the memo for the legal services for special education and student services for the FY 24 for January 2024. We have a service charge of $2,697.10. Therefore, total to the year, we have spent $13,022.86. From the budget of $50,000 a year, you take that $13,000 away. We currently still have a legal service balance for special ed of $36,977.14.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. Any questions from the committee? Here are none.
Motion to receive. Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Item number two, Taunton High Culinary Kitchen. See attached memo. Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, if you will.
Absolutely. So here we have the Taunton High School Commercial Kitchen, and this is a warding of the bid. So in June of 2023, in the Long Range Planning Subcommittee meeting, the Subcommittee approved the recommendation to contract with Compass Group Architecture, which is also called CGA, for the purpose of developing the high school commercial kitchen bid documents and project management. In addition to developing these comprehensive set of drawings and complimation of documents, CGA would utilize the online project management platform, Project Dog, to solicit more of the bids. Now, a lot of times you're going to say probably like, okay, why is that that we're doing it this way than not the traditional ones that we open here? Now, similar to what we have done in the past with, like, Mokehi, we use Project Dog. Due to the complexity of this project, that is the reason why we chose to go or that's the recommendation was to use CGA and solicit bids through the online platform. So the project went out to bid on Project Dog on December 6 at 2:00 p.m., and the general bids were due on January 25 at 2:00 p.m. The construction period will begin in June and requires that all work be completed and not merely substantially complete by the end of August on August 31. So as you can see, I've also included in there as well is the table that had there the strategy to utilize Project Dog proved very successful. There were seven general bids, which included an alternate bid for the freezer cooler edition, where electronically submitted on Project Dog. And again, please see the attached Project Dog general list. The bids could not be electronically viewed until the bid timeline was closed on January 25 at 2:00 p.m. And please know that these bids are opened electronically, and the people that have bid on it will view it going electronically. So based on reviewing of the bids, performing our due diligence, and per the recommendation of CGA, I am recommending that the Taunton High School Commercial Kitchen project, inclusive of the alternate one, be awarded to Collins Construction Company in the amount of $1,134,528.8, as they were the overall lowest and most responsive bidder. And please know that this is not going to be charged under the school budget. It will be charged to ESAR.
Question. How did they come to the conclusion? What was the due diligence process that Compass Group Architecture used to come to this conclusion?
Just like we do here, right? We go ahead and review the bids, make sure that all the bid documents are included. You'll make sure there's a bond. You'll make sure that all the items that we normally do when we do the process as when we open a bid here, school committee usually says, we advise the administration to do their due diligence. We work with CGA. He and I worked together. We reviewed the bids. And again, we did bid on, we did agree that this was the lowest and most responsive bidder.
So for the viewers at home and people who have watched on the school committee for a long time, so there's a clear understanding, generally bids are submitted here to this committee. This committee opens the bids, they review the bids, then they refer them to the administration and the architect. Then the architect and the administration then comes back to this committee and makes a recommendation. Is the architect or the contractor usually present at the meeting when the bid is awarded? Like, for example, here tonight?
Not all the time. And many times when we open a bid here, we don't have the, and very seldom, I should say, I don't want to say never, very seldom do we have people that submitted bids in the audience.
You know, it's a pretty substantial contract. It's $1.1 million. So I, you know, respect the process that you use, but I think going forward that maybe we should consider a written policy on how these take place. That way we're consistent every time. I don't know if there was a reason, Superintendent Cabral, why this process?
No, again, it's because of complexity. You're dealing with gas lines, electrical lines. You're dealing with underground work. It was a very complex project when you're dealing with a commercial kitchen that is going to be industry standard. So that was the reason why we felt that this project was above and beyond the facilities director, Mark Freitas, to put the bid together, and we contracted with CGA. CGA has a very strong reputation here in Taunton. I believe they've done work. They actually oversaw the project on Mokehi, and their recommendation was Project Dog. There's a way to electronically solicit bids because it gets emailed out or distributed to a greater cast of contractors, and it resulted in seven bids. So overall, the process worked well. But I do agree, I mean, 99.9% of the time, we're going to be bringing bids here and opening them the way we traditionally do. But because of the complexity of the project, knowing the cost of the project, and wanting to get, you know, I mean, you see the range from 1.5 million to 1.1 million. So we were able to save, you know, $400,000 utilizing this process. So I think the process worked, and it's something that, again, maybe moving forward when we do discuss this in long-range planning, that we make it clear on if we're going to use a project, a program or platform like Project Dog, that the committee has a clear understanding on how it's going to work, and maybe we invite the committee to attend online.
If I could, Superintendent Cabral, I would like to say that, please know that this Project Dog is in compliance with all of the Inspector General's, all MGL laws for the construction piece. So please know that this is used quite often across the Commonwealth and across the country. They use the central register where I normally post all bids. Everything is done, and actually, it's much, it's not easier, but it's aligned with all of the IG requirements, especially with plan holders. So if there's an addendum that goes out, it automatically will send any addendums to any of the plan holders. So there's no, there's very little room for error.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Shavz.
Just a clarification, because I know that these documents are online. So under the vendors, number one is substantially lower than everybody else. So I'm assuming, A, that they are not bidding the, what was in the details, and B, they weren't a responsive bidder? I'm gonna, I just wanted to-
They're not a responsible bidder. So, yes. So usually what we do is we look to see if they had all the stuff that is aligned with the contract, with the bid, and they were not. So that is the reason why.
Yes. Thank you.
Dr. DeMello.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. So in the superintendent's memo to us, the last paragraph is where I'm a bit confused. I recommend the Taunton High School Commercial Kitchen project, inclusive of alternative one, be awarded to Collins Construction Company in the amount of $1.134,528.08, as they were the overall lowest and most responsive bidder. So does that mean that that $173,584 is added to the $1.134 million? I'm confused. It says inclusive of alternate?
Correct. What it's asking, if you look on the grid here on the tab, you will, I'm sorry.
Dr. DeMello, the 1.134,528 figure is the general contract bid in the amount of $960,428 plus $174,108.
Okay.
So that means, that means the alt one was included in the $1.1 million figure.
So why? All right. So what is alternative sales? What do they do?
Alt one is an addition to the general bid. So alt one is the addition of the walk-in freezer fridge. So the overall project bid is the remodeling and updating of the culinary kitchen, and then the alternate one is the addition to the walk-in freezer fridge.
So we are adding another $173,584 to the 1.134,528.08?
No, that is inclusive. That, so again, the general contract bid of 960,000 plus the alternate one bid amount of 174, which will include, both of those will include the total bid, which we're recommending for approval.
So my question is, why Collins Construction coming in at $960,944.08 and then add the 173,584 to make it the 1.134,528.08? Why? This is very confusing.
Question. Was there more than one at that meeting? Was there more than one? Yeah, presented?
So what happens, so alt one is like, all right. So when we did the, when we did the baseball field, we do the general baseball field, and alternate one could be the scoreboard. Alt two could be the lights. So those are additional stuff.
Okay.
And so everybody bid on the general upgrading of the culinary kitchen, which was the general contract bid, and then the alternate one bid is the addition to the freezer, walk-in freezer fridge.
So they're two separate bids. There's a bid for the general construction, and then there's a bid specific to the walk-in freezer.
So alternative sales is a different company. It has nothing to do with the alt bid, which is the 174,100.
He's looking at the number one vendor, which is called alternate sales.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. That is a bidder.
Okay. My apologies. Okay, now I understand what's going on here. I apologize. Secondly, was there anyone present from Taunton Public Schools in the capacity, as Mrs. Moynihan and Mr. Freitas, at the bid opening, even though it was electronically?
No, and that's normally what we have done in the past. It does, again, I have the information from Project Dog and how they do it all, and I could get information for you if you need further. But it is, again, please know that this is all aligned with Mass General laws and the Inspector General's office.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mrs. Moynihan, but the duties of the school committee is exactly budget, and I will be voting no on this because there was no one present from Taunton Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shavz.
One other question. With your example, you talked about the ball field. Was this the only alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
So everybody has had a chance to speak. Before we vote, I know that we're using ESAR funds. I know Bristol County Savings Bank is making a contribution to this as well. Again, I think we should have a policy in place going forward if we are not going to utilize regular customary practice, but I also don't want to hold up, you know, the culinary kitchen. I need a motion.
A motion to accept this?
A motion to approve.
Approve it, yes.
The chair will second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. The chair votes aye. All those oppose? The motion passes two to one.
And I just wanted to record to show, Mr. Chairman, I'm voting no because there was no one from Taunton Public Schools present at the bid opening.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Item number three, bills payable FY 24 in the amount of $1,128,945.94. Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Shavz.
Okay. Couple of questions. Through page one and page four, there are a lot of medical supply expenses that are coming from Amazon. Have we thought about a possibility of finding a vendor that would give us it cheaper than everybody going to Amazon?
I do have to say that when it's these here, these, the psychological mental health supplies, these are sometimes little trinkets at times. It could be, it could be, what is it called now? Thank you, stress balls. It could be things like that. Fidget toys, thank you very much. So it's not full medical, correct. Please know that, yes. It's just that that's the line that hits with, for Desi.
My second question is on page five. With the interpreters, are we paying per minute, per hour, there on their base date interpreters for $37,231? How do they charge us?
We do have a contract with them. I'm not going to say that I do recall all of it, but I can go back and get that information for you, so, and share that with you.
Yeah, because I was wondering, like, do we pay, like, you know, by the call, by, you know, if we're paying by the minute? Like, how is it done so that whoever's using it would know how to use it maybe more appropriately?
We do, we do ask that anybody that uses the interpreter's services to contact the EL department, and the admin assistant is very good about doing the proper, working the proper channels and making sure that we are using that correctly. But again, I will be happy to share that information with you.
Mr. Chairman, motion being ordered to approve the FY 24 bills payable for the amount of $1,128,945.94, and on discussion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Seconded.
Okay, on discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recorded as voting present on page 22. One second, please. Pride Inc. in the amount of $7,772. I'd like to be recorded as voting present, since I serve on the Finance Committee and am a board of directors.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Any other questions, comments from the committee? Okay, here are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the motion carries. Motion would be in order-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of the states and to the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan, would you like to leave us an indication?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan, if you could do the roll call, and we will just note that Chairman DeMello is joining us via Zoom this evening?
Yes, good evening.
Mr. Renus is absent. Mrs. Shavz?
Present.
Mr. Pawlowski?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Ms. Santos?
Present.
Stephen Viera?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Chairman DeMello?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for Wednesday, March 6, 2024.
As submitted.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And now we have the Student Advisory Committee report. We have three students with us tonight. Isaiah Wendell, I don't know if just you are going to speak, but if you are, if you could introduce the other two students.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I'm part of the Student Advisory Council for Taunton High School.
I'm Denzel Chuku.
And I'm Jessica Chuku.
Before beginning with all the great things that are happening at Taunton High School, I would like to thank our Assistant Superintendents, Mr. Barata and Mrs. Moynihan, for taking the time to visit Taunton High School this week. Mr. Barata went around the classrooms, walking through one of mine, actually, teaching us about the upcoming solar eclipse, which was greatly appreciated. Additionally, Mrs. Moynihan sat in on our Student Advisory meeting today that we hold in school. It is always a pleasure seeing members of the administration in our school. Onto things going on in Taunton High School. Spring sports started this past Monday, and team tryouts are happening this week. We wish all the teams a successful season.
The 10th grade MCAS English test is approaching. It will take place on Tuesday, March 26, and Wednesday, March 27, 2024. To encourage MCAS testing, a pep rally will be held on Friday. We wish all the students who are taking or will be taking the MCAS this year the best of luck.
Our junior prom will take place on May 2nd at the Venus DeMello in Swansea, Massachusetts. I'm sure it'll be an excellent event for all our students to enjoy.
Additionally, our guidance counselors are currently in the process of meeting with students to finalize their course selections for the upcoming school year. This process will continue over the next few weeks. Additionally, the Skills USA State Competitions is upcoming in April. I want to wish all the students that are participating the best of luck. Our school's AFJR OTC program will be attending the Military Ball at South Worcester High School on March 28. Also, we would like to wish the best of luck to the students participating in the upcoming DECA IDCCs. And lastly, on Thursday at 6 o'clock, Taunton High School will be hosting a college night for our juniors and their parents and guardians in the Taunton High School auditorium. As always, thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Wendell. Excellent job. I mean, Isaiah, I'm sorry. A lot of exciting things happening, and we wish our students the best of luck in everything that's going on, the sports, you know, the skills. And I think it's really great that you're having an MCAS pep rally. So we're wishing everyone the best of luck in their MCAS tests as well. All right, thank you, guys. Is there any public input this evening?
There was no public input.
Okay, thank you. We will go right to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go out of order. So I'm going to cover the Professional Development Day first, and then I'll follow that by some great news regarding MCAS. So the timing is perfect. And then, as you notice, we have quite a large audience here this evening, so I'm sure we'll spend enough time paying our respects to the outstanding efforts of our wrestling team. So first and foremost, I am pleased to report that the district held its final full day professional development on Friday, March 8. The day began with a mandatory session for all Taunton Public School employees titled "Establishing and Maintaining Respect Within the Workplace." The session was led by attorney Jamie Kenny and Ms. Jean Hurdle, a well-known, experienced and respected trainer and investigator specializing in domestic violence, bullying, workplace violence, and discriminatory harassment. Altogether, the district held a total of 43 professional development sessions with all segments of our population. So all seven unions were represented, included our non-union or non-aligned employees. A total of 825 employees participated in the Professional Development Day on March 8. Taunton High School, Taunton Alternative High School, and Taunton Public Virtual Academy staff attended a presentation by renowned guest speaker Jimmy Cassius. He is the author of Culturize. Attendees learned Cassius's four principles to maximize student learning and remember that every child deserves to be part of something great. Cassius also held an afternoon session for district administrators. I want to thank the high school for securing Mr. Cassius with funding through its BA Foundation Grant. Our fifth, seventh, five through seven grades of studies teachers participated in investigating history training with consultants at the Martin Middle School. The opportunity was funded through a grant secured by the district. At Freeman Middle School, all our elementary teachers were given a reorientation to our one's curriculum resources, which was needed as the initial rollout to this curriculum took place just prior to the COVID shutdown. Feedback from the sessions was very positive. I want to thank Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Chris Barata, Executive Director for Human Resources Cheryl Butts, and our Instruction Leadership Team and Coordinators for all their hard work in putting together Rewarding and Successful Professional Development Day. My email and my phone has not stopped, I have not stopped receiving messages from people throughout the district saying it was one of the best professional development days that they've had in years. Some great news regarding MCAS, and I'm very excited to share this. I think our last school committee meeting, we heard an outstanding presentation from the high school and their school improvement plan, and we just heard about a tremendous professional development day. So on the curriculum and instruction side, I'm very proud to announce that the Taunton Public Schools achieved a total of 16 perfect scores on the MCAS Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment Test, MCAS, that was conducted in the fall, in the spring of 2023. Five students at Taunton High School achieved perfect scores in English Language Arts. Six students across the high school, Freeman Middle School, Easttown Elementary School, and Polalel Elementary School achieved perfect scores in math. And four students across the high school and Freeman School achieved perfect scores in science. Taunton also had two students who achieved multiple perfect scores. A freshman student earned a perfect score on both the English Language Arts and Science, and a senior student earned a perfect score on all three tests. I want to extend my congratulations to all our students, their families, their teachers for this impressive accomplishment. I will personally be visiting these students in their schools and presenting them with a token of our appreciation for their outstanding achievement. Next, we have our wrestling team. So what's, I cannot speak about enough about the community and the culture that exists in our wrestling team, because it started tonight as recognizing two individuals for becoming state champs, turned out into an event where recognizing the entire program. So this is a program that achieved a 14-6 overall record. They had 402 individual wins, which included 289 pins. We want to congratulate seniors John Mandeville, Ethan Harris, who broke the school wins record. But I can't help but think that there's someone sitting out there who's going after that record, Ethan. You set the bar high. Gabriel Laskowski, Robert Tran, Jaden Fletcher, Breland Avalos Yemenes, and Isaiah Avril. This team also achieved Cape Cod Invitational Champions. They were the Holyoke Champions. They finished second at the Marshville Holiday Championship and took second in the Hakamak. They also had seven Hakamak All-Stars and five individual Hakamak Champions. Michael Laskowski was a champion, John Mandeville, Gabriel Laskowski. Ethan Harris was a champion at the 190-pound division. William Buffington, Kingston DaCosta. Elijah Prophet was a champion at 215-pound division. At the Massachusetts or the MIAA Division One South Sectional Championships, they were three-peat. Winning three consecutive championships is no easy feat. Congratulations. Seated amongst us, we have six Division One South Sectional Individual Champions. I mean, these names just keep repeating themselves. Michael Laskowski Jr., John Mandeville Sr., Gabriel Laskowski Sr., Ethan Harris Sr., and Elijah Prophet Sr. So again, senior leadership, or leadership at the highest levels, setting a strong foundation for the underclassmen that will soon be following them. They were top four in Division One. They were, we have one Division One state finalist in John Mandeville. We have two Division One state champions in Ethan Harris and Elijah Prophet. One All-State finalist in Ethan Harris. One All-St- One All-State finalist in Ethan Harris, oh, sorry, one All-State placer in Elijah Prophet. One All-State finalist in Ethan Harris, oh, sorry, one All-State placer in Elijah Prophet. And I only think it's fitting, as this is Women in Leadership Month, that we have two female wrestlers who placed second and fourth respectively. Congratulations. I have a few more things that I'd like to share, but I'm gonna pause this time. If Coach Adilson is here this evening, Adilson, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of the squad, and Mr. Otavio Nelly, you're welcome to step to the podium, too.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mayor O'Connell, School Committee, thank you very much for having us today. I just want to say one thing about this group, and they are such a fantastic group of student athletes. They are everything that you want them to be. They go all over the state. They went all over New England, and they are the pride of our city. And I'm extremely, extremely proud of them. Our coaching staff, Coach Galveo, Coach Vickery, and Coach Cho. When Adilson came in to take over this program, we were struggling. We had nine kids. How many years ago was that? 13 years ago. We were talking about disbanding this program. We now have over 60 kids. We've won three straight South Division Sectional Championships, Division One Championships, and we've got a vibrant middle school program that's going on that's just gonna continue this for years to come. So I'm very, very extremely proud of this group. Adilson?
I would like to thank the School Committee, Mark Otavio Nelly, our training staff, Chris and Lauren, and the THS administration for all the support these past few years. We've had a great season, a lot of highs and lows, especially compared to like seasons in the past, but the team held on and finished strong. A big congratulations again to Ethan Harris and Elijah Prophet, our first school state champs for wrestling at Taunton High. As well as Ethan, he broke our school record for 151 wins. That's big. We're hoping that someone beats it next year. There's a couple, there's some competition. Also, Mike Laskowski, John Mandeville, Gabe Laskowski for all being sectional champs. As a group, our team has won three sectional titles in three years, and we couldn't do without our, not only our varsity wrestlers, but also our JV wrestlers. That's why we didn't just wanna highlight just the kids that won state titles. It's the, it's a team effort. They don't, they can't just practice with each other. They have to practice with everybody else that's here. So we try to make this a family. We have everyone show up. They show up every single week. A lot of teams, by the time sectional is over, they have five kids go to practice. We had 30 to 40 kids every single day. We just kinda wanna highlight that. It's a full-team effort. Myself and other coaches had a great time with our athletes getting through it all. And this year has been a year of first fours. Again, we had two state champs. We had two girls, Fiona Laughin and Danielle Hane. She's not here right now. They're both placing the girls' state tournament this year for Division One. And then we also had our first wrestling baby with Coach Vickery having his third child in the middle of the season. So. So I'm just gonna call out every kid. You guys get this. Shake everyone's hand. Jason Edelman. Kevin Arujio. Isaiah Avril. Watch your stuff, guys. Anthony Barbosa. Antonio Brandau. Andrew Brown. William Buffington.
Good job. Well done. Congratulations. Good job. Keep it up, huh?
Kingston DaCosta. Austin Ferrier. Jaden Fletcher. Brian Hane. Ethan Harris. Thomas Hoy. Fiona Laughin. Gabe Laskowski. Michael Laskowski. Sorry. Shane Linds. Richard Masonette. Antonio Maldonado. Braden Mandeville. John Mandeville. Michael Mealy. Josh Millerick. Elijah Prophet. Landon Rodriguez. Jackson Royster. Jason Satri. Cody Trulson. Anthony Viera. Ashton Viera. And then Jason Westgate. Just wanna add one thing. And then I also just wanted to add one thing. This is the first year where we had our middle school program, so each middle school had their own team this year. I think we had about 60 kids that signed up, and we currently have our youth program going right now at Taunton High with about 30 kids that show up weekly. So we can't wait for the future.
And Mr. Cabral, Elijah is only a junior. He's coming back.
Well, maybe this will add some motivation for next year. So again, I commend the team. I haven't seen this type of camaraderie since the 2001 Patriots came out together for the Super Bowl back in 2001. So to see you all show up to support two of your teammates, you know, it really reminds me about what is all, what is great about sportsmanship, what is great about sports, and how it brings kids from all walks of life together. But I also want to take a moment to recognize with the state that I'm excited to share the success of two high school student athletes at the MIAA State Division One Wrestling Tournament last month. Ethan Harris and Elijah Prophet both won their respective weight classes. Harris topped the 190-pound weight class and Prophet the 215-pound weight class. Each student athlete won five matches in a single elimination breakout bracket format to win the championship. Taunton High School as a team placed fourth overall out of 50 schools, missing out on the podium spot by just one and a half points. Both Harris and Prophet went on to compete in the All-State Tournament. Harris placed second and Prophet placed sixth. The MIAA Division One State Championship for Harris and Prophet close out in outstanding gear for our wrestling program under Coach Adilson Galveo. On behalf of the School Committee and the Taunton Public Schools, I have a small token of our appreciation, if you don't mind coming up. Not the state championship trophy, but a little, some hardware. Congratulations. Thank you. And all this hard work, all this support, not only do we have champions on the classroom, not only we have champions on the mats, on the, on the, on the turf, we also have champions who are leading this work. I am thrilled to share something that I don't think many of you know regarding our athletic department. Our teams, not only, our teams, not only, our team members have been recognized by the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association, MSSADA, for their exceptional contribution to interscholastic sports. The MSSADA, they recognize the adults that do the work behind the scenes. So the Taunton Public School District Athletic Director Mark Otavio Nelly has been honored with the prestigious Richard E. Lewis Award. This accolade is a testament to his unwavering dedication and significant contribution to interscholastic sports in Massachusetts. So Mr. Otavio Nelly, on behalf of the Taunton Public Schools. As many of you know, Mr. Otavio Nelly, we retire at the end of this year, so a little gratitude.
You're welcome.
But anyone who understands and knows Taunton athletics, they realize that Mark can't do it alone. So we also would like to recognize Head Trainer Christine Kerr, as she has been awarded the Athletic Trainer of the Year Award. The award highlights her dedication and exceptional service in the field of athletic training, as well as Administrative Assistant Sandy Altman. She also received the Administrative Assistant Award. So on behalf of the Taunton Public Schools.
Mr. Cabral, if you don't mind, I know you give me a hard time when I say how very fortunate I am. I have been fortunate in my 22 years here to be associated with Christine and Sandra. And without them, we've been together for my whole time here. And without them, this wouldn't be possible, and I am forever grateful. Thank you.
And I couldn't think of a better way to conclude my report.
Thank you, Stephen. I couldn't either. It's always the best night at School Committee when we can recognize our students' accomplishments. So we really appreciate you guys being here. Thank you for all the hard work you do and for making Taunton and Taunton Public Schools so proud. And to the coaches, of course, and I see a lot of proud parents here. Can't do it without your support either, so thank you. All right, and I guess we'll move on. Oh, okay. Motion for a five, seriously, five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. Can we get a motion to come out of recess?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. Okay, we will move now to administrative business, the staffing report, and Taunton Public Schools staffing update.
Second on that.
Are you gonna do the same thing for the Taunton Public School staffing update?
It's the same report that I provide you all. So if you have any questions, they'll be able to answer them.
Yeah, I wanna do both at the same time. Please.
Part of the motion.
Yep.
Okay. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Okay, Subcommittee Reports, Unit A Subcommittee, Misses, 31324, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, we met with the, I'm sorry, that's the TEA, right?
Joint Labor Management.
Yeah, Joint Labor Management, and they've raised some concerns with us, and we referred all those to Administration. That's the report.
Okay.
Accept the report as presented.
Second. Motion, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. Now we have Finance and Law Subcommittee, 32024, Chair DeMello.
Thank you, Madam.
Mayor, I pass the gavel to Mr. Viera, so he will be reporting out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met today at 6:24 PM. And the first item we discussed was special education expenses. It was noted that $2,697.02 was spent in the month of January. Total to date's $13,022.86. The remaining funds, $36,977.14. A motion was made and seconded. All voting in favor of accepting report. Item number two was a memo regarding THS Culinary Kitchen. Commercial kitchen bid was awarded to Compass Group Architecture Project Dog. Bids were posted on 12/6, 23 at 2 PM. Bids were closed 1/25/2024 at 2 PM. June start of construction, August 21. Project should be substantially complete. There were seven bids total. One alternate, which included a walk-in freezer. The bids were opened and reviewed. The total cost for project, including the freezers, $1,134,528.8. It's gonna be charged to ESRA accounts. I believe we also received a donation from Bristol County Savings Bank. Process through Project Dog has been approved by the IG. Question, Dr. DeMello, is if there were any Taunton Public Schools representative present when the bid was open, the response was no. I know we had other discussion that if we are gonna use Project Dog going forward, we should probably have a policy in place on how we're gonna do that as opposed to regular customary practice. So a motion was made and seconded, and the vote was two to one. Mr. DeMello, Dr. DeMello, excuse me, voted no as a result of no PTS representative being present at the open of the bids. Item number three, bills payable on the warrants. Motion was made and seconded to pay bills in the amount of $1,128,945.94. Dr. DeMello voted present in regards to Pride Inc. line item, which he serves on the Board of Directors on page 22. The vote passed 3-0. That concludes my report.
We should accept the report.
Second on that.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. We will move on to new business. First is the Student Opportunity Act.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as required under the Student Opportunity Act, we have to engage the community and solicit feedback regarding how they believe our current plan is being carried out regarding its effectiveness, and also to identify potential new evidence-based practices that we should implement as far as when we submit the revised Student Opportunity Act plan. So I'm happy to report that our survey concluded this evening. So of the original three priorities, expanding capacity to address social-emotional learning came in as the highest rated priority in our original plan. The second highest rated priority was early college programs that focused on underrepresented students. And the third, the third priority was expanding full-day access to high-quality pre-K kindergarten for four-year-olds. So of the original three, those were how they came in as viewed by the public. Regarding the next four priorities that we asked the public to weigh in on, and again, this, students voted, teachers voted, and caregivers voted. The highest priority was to provide, they would like to see added to the Student Opportunity Act plan was supporting educators implement high-quality instruction curriculum. Number two was to develop more effective family-community partnerships. Number three was to continue with our acceleration academies. And four was to have more co-teaching professional development practices for our students with disabilities and our English language learners. So based on this feedback, we will complete or revise our plan and bring it to the committee for approval at the, at the April meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Do we need to, is that just informational? There's no need?
Mayor, excuse me?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Was there a number, a total number of respondents? I don't know if you said that, or if I missed it.
I didn't check before the meeting, but I know it was well over 300.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. We will move on to number two, which is the FY25 Annual Appointment of Superintendent to Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors.
So I'll refer you to the third paragraph. As you're aware, I serve on the Reed's Collaborative Board. We've been a member for many years of the Reed's Collaborative, and this year I served as the president. But what's required is on an annual basis, the committee must take a vote to appoint me to serve on the board. So in the third paragraph, I provided you with the motion. So if the committee agrees and someone is willing to make a motion that is seconded to appoint me, I would be happy to continue serving and fulfill my term as president for the second year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second on discussion. I just want to thank you and congratulate you for serving as president. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Now it's the Reed's Collaborative Quarterly Report, which is informational only, no action necessary. Do you need to comment on that, Superintendent?
All I'll say is I provided you with an update on where we are in the calendar process. So as of now, all our collective bargaining units are reviewing the calendars, and we've asked them to provide us with feedback on the calendars by March 25th. I can tell you already that based on the feedback that we're receiving, the calendars that we shared with them are going to look a little different. But one calendar will have two days of professional development learning and an additional day allocated for convocation before students start school. A second option will be a traditional calendar where professional learning and convocation takes place two days prior to students beginning school. And a third option, two days of professional development learning and one day of convocation prior to the start of the school for students, along with two additional early release days in March for professional development.
I'm sorry, Superintendent, that's number four. Are you doing number four?
I was doing four.
Okay.
Number three was...
Did three go with two, or I don't think we...
Three was informational for...
Okay, got you. Oh, all right, thank you very much, okay.
So, the calendar that I'm most excited about is option three, because to have two early release days for students where staff will remain behind to participate professional development is something that I think we need to probably take a look at and do more of. So again, I'll bring the recommendation forward based on all the feedback that we received from the unions at the April meeting.
Very good.
Okay. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you think it will be at the first or the second meeting in April? First. Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay.
Question, Mayor, please?
Yes.
So there's been some communication from various members from the school community. What have we done in the past with the day before Thanksgiving, and what was the other holiday, the day before Christmas? What's been past practice on that for the teachers?
For the teachers? Off the top of my head, Mr. Dr. Demello, I can, I'll have to get you that information because I don't know off the top of my head, because I'm a year-round employee, so I usually work those days, but I'd have to do some research and get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Next is YouTube Content Management Update.
Just some information I wanted to share with the committee and also make the public aware. Now, I would like to inform you of the changes we're making under our management of instructional and educational YouTube content as we continue to prioritize the safety and the well-being of our students in the ever-evolving digital landscape. In response to the Instructional Technology Department reporting a growing number of students attempting to access inappropriate content on YouTube through their district Google accounts, we are empowering staff with the authority to approve content for students. So when a staff member goes to utilize a YouTube video in the classroom, a box is going to pop up, and then they will have to approve or check if it's appropriate to be used. So if a student goes to YouTube and does the same thing, they're not going to have that authority. Only the staff members will have the authority to approve the videos that they're watching on YouTube. So again, it's going to prevent students from accessing inappropriate content, and then that'll also ensure that all staff are vetting the content that they're reviewing before they share it in class. So again, another safety measure that we're putting in place. So this permission change took place on March 15th, and we believe it will help to create a safer online learning environment by ensuring students only have access to educational and grade-level appropriate content. So we want to thank our new IT Director, Jennifer Ashley, for bringing this to our attention, for jumping on this right away and taking swift action to prevent students from accessing inappropriate content.
Okay, very good. If there are no comments or questions, there's no action necessary. Ms. Santos?
And I don't know if this applies now, but I'm just, as someone who's taught dual enrollment at Taunton High School VP, the content, because it's through staff, right? We weren't given staff permission, so it was really hard for me to show specific content to classrooms as a college educator because of those restrictions. And so I'm just thinking of like early college and all of those things, not knowing if they'll have access to be able to bypass those security measures too, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, we'll make note of that if that becomes an issue.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Santos. Retirement of Nurse Manager Karen Regan.
So, in your packet, I just provided you with a quick little memo. Nurse Manager Karen Regan has informed me of her intent to retire after an impressive 42-year career in nursing, including eight years here at the Taunton Public Schools. Karen joined the nurse, Karen joined us as a nurse manager in 2015 and brought a tireless work ethic and dedication to the position. Her leadership and expertise were invaluable to us during the COVID-19 pandemic. She put together a lead team of five nurse managers in response to COVID to keep everyone informed with the latest information and guidelines. She continues to provide the school staff, administration, and the greater school community with recommendations and updates from the state. In addition to her essential work connected to COVID-19, Karen also helped us strengthen our relationship with man and health community, which resulted in the opening of a student-based health center. So Karen is an outstanding nurse. She's been instrumental. I don't know how we would have gotten through, or how, and I know she assisted the city as well during COVID. So she, again, tireless worker, she set the bar very hard, a high, and she'll be surely missed when she retires at the conclusion of this year. So again, just wanted to share that with the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. She certainly has had a very impressive eight years and was really instrumental in our partnership during COVID, so we greatly appreciated her. Unfinished business. Oh, I apologize.
So, if this works with new business, I just wanted to inform the committee, as Chair of the High School Subcommittee, I'll be coordinating with Superintendent Cabral for a series of meetings going forward, subject to availability. The first meetings will be follow-up with the High School Advisory Councils. We met earlier in the year. We want to arrange a meeting where we can get back together with that group of students and, you know, hear about how we've progressed with all the concerns that they've had in the year. Additionally, we're going to have meetings, initial advisory meetings with the three middle schools. They've got their advisory councils together. We haven't had those meetings yet. And then the final meeting or meetings will be with the principals and/or their designees of the high schools and the middle schools so that we can provide them with an audience to hear their concerns regarding primary needs that they have at their school from a space point of view. You know, if there's anything that they need, any programs they're trying to implement for which they may not have adequate space within their buildings, we want to hear those concerns so that we can, you know, begin to collaborate and work on those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pulowski. Mrs. Shofs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similarly, I'm the chairperson of the Special Program Subcommittee, and I will be convening my Subcommittee to go over the special programs that we currently have, which is an extensive list. Mr. Cabral and I had gone through it last week, and create an action plan on how we can effectively distribute this to parents, caregivers, and students so there is multiple places within the district that they will be able to access this information. So we're hoping to meet on or before the mid-April. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, now we will move to unfinished business.
Comments, please, Mayor?
Oh, sure. Sure.
On Mr. Pulowski's Subcommittee on the space issue. I brought it to, I don't know whose attention, I don't know if it was the Superintendent, but anyway, do we have a space committee for initiatives such as Mr. Pulowski has just mentioned?
We don't have necessarily a space committee.
Not necessarily a school committee, but within your administration.
It would probably fall on the, if it's, depending on how it falls, it'd either be special programs, long-range planning, or curriculum and instruction. It can hit multiple committees, so I guess it would depend on what the outcome is of the discussions and where it gets referred to for further examination.
Okay. So I didn't mean to, it would be part of a school committee, Subcommittee piece. I mean, within the administration, does that exist? Does a space committee exist with the footprint of Taunton Public Schools?
So we do not have a committee to examine space. That typically would fall on the Director of Facilities or the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations to conduct a planned occupational capacity study or to review our enrollments, but typically that POC and space typically falls on the long-range planning because that deals with our facilities.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, if there's nothing further, we will go to unfinished business. The first item is Coaching for Change Presentation, which will be May 1st, 2024.
Yep, just informational, and this is a follow-up to the request from the School Committee to ask Coaching for Change, the CPAC, and task to bring presentations before us. So I can take the second one if you'd like.
Okay, I was going to say, is the second one related then to the first?
Yeah, the second one was just to make the committee aware that we have reached out to CPAC, and we are waiting their response.
Okay. And is there any, any business on the action item update? Okay, seeing none, we will, I note that there is no press here this evening, and if there's no further business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.